Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. And I'll go right to the clerk to find out if we have anyone participating electronically.
No, not as of yet. I would like to make a correction though, if I may.
Absolutely.
Uh, councillor Gardner, at the last meeting, you would ask during the correspondence section if you can make a motion for one of the items. And I did tell you, no, you cannot. Well, I was incorrect in that when I looked into it. You absolutely can make motion, any member of county can make motion at any point in time, as long as you have a second or. So my apologies, I was steering it the wrong way.
Thank you.
Thanks for that. Uh, next on the agenda, adoption of the agenda. Everyone had a chance to view it. Need a mover and a second there. It's moved by councillor Tibere, seconded by councillor Gardner. All that, the meeting agenda dated Monday, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, be adopted. Questions, comments? None? All in favor? Carry. Anyone has a conflict of interest to declare, you can do it now or before the subject in question arises. Uh, there are no presentations and delegations. Next is the adoption of the minutes as circulated. And again, I will be looking for a mover in a second. The move by councillor Ross, seconded by councillor Bigelow. Be resolved that council adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, and the committee of the whole meeting, October twentieth, twenty twenty five. Questions, comments?
I have a comment on the minute of October twentieth, the last resolution to amend the uh, to adjourn the meeting, my apologies, the resolution number is wrong on there, so I have to do a correction to the minute. It should say resolution number twenty five dash two oh nine.
So should we reread it and write as amended?
Yes.
Okay, so mover and second are still okay with it? Okay. So moved by councillor Ross, seconded by councillor Bigelow. Be resolved that council adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, and the committee of the whole meeting of October twenty, twenty twenty five, as amended. Questions, comments? None? All in favor? Carry. Then we have notice of motions. Uh, you know, we had asked the clerk to bring back a bunch of motions, so get through them. We'll start with uh seven, seven point one. I need a mover and a second there. Moved by councillor Ross, seconded by councillor Tibere. Whereas the city of Nord Bay has circulated their letter to the province, requesting the Nord's pilot programs to become a permanent funding opportunity for northern municipalities, and to expand the criteria to include agricultural equipment impact on roads. And whereas council of the corporation of the town of Ottawa at the regular meeting of Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, stated its directive to support Nord's pilot program to become a permanent funding opportunity. Therefore, be 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 it resolved that council of the town of Ottawa supports the city and Nord Bay resolution regarding making the Nord's pilot program permanent, and further that a copy of this resolution be sent to the minister of Northern Development, Minister of Agriculture, Food and Agribusiness, the Minister of Infrastructure, MPP Vic Fideli, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipality, the Rural Ontario Municipal Association, Roma, and all Ontario municipalities. Questions, comments? None? All in favor? Harry.
Mayor Belanchi, our Director of the Services, that's just how they just love them all.
Thank you. Well, seven point two, it's support for elect respect campaign. I need a mover and a second there. Moved by councillor LeVite, seconded by councillor Ross. Whereas the town of Smith Falls has circulated their letter to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, supporting the elect respect pledge. And whereas council of the corporation of the town of Ottawa at the regular meeting of Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, stated its directive to support the elect respect pledge. Therefore, be it resolved that council of the town of Ottawa supports the town of Smith's Fall resolution regarding elect respect campaign, and further that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, MP Palin Rashfaw, MPP Vic Fideli, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipality, and all Ontario municipalities. Questions, comments? None? All in favor? Harry. Seven point three, support for income increase for veterans. We need a mover and a second there. Moved by councillor Gardner, seconded by councillor Tibere. Whereas the township of Perry has circulated the resolution to formally call on the government of Canada to increase the eligibility threshold for the income replacement benefit, the IRB program, to assist veterans in need. And whereas council of the corporation of the town of Ottawa at the regular meeting of Tuesday, October fourteen, twenty twenty five, stated its directive to support the township of Perry. Therefore, be resolved that council of the town of Ottawa supports the township of Perry resolution to formally call on the government of Canada to increase the eligibility threshold for the income replacement benefit program to assist veterans in need. And further that, a copy of this resolution be sent to Prime Minister, Minister of Veteran Affairs, MP Palin Rashfaw, MPP Vic Fideli, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, and all Ontario municipalities. Questions, comments? None? All in favor? Harry. Seven point four, support for Bill C dash six one, safe drinking water for First Nations. I need a mover and a second there. Moved by councillor LeVite, seconded by councillor Ross. Whereas the township of Woolwich has circulated their resolution to call on the government of Canada and the Minister of Indigenous Services to reintroduce legislation to ensure First Nations have the right to clean and safe drinking water. And whereas council of the corporation of town of Ottawa at their regular meeting of Tuesday, October fourteen, twenty twenty five, stated its directives to support the township of Woolwich. Therefore, be it resolved that council of the town of matter what supports the township of Woolwich resolution to call on the government of Canada and the Minister of Indigenous Services to reintroduce legislation to ensure First Nations have the right to clean and safe drinking water through Bill C dash sixty one. And further that, a copy of this resolution be sent to the Prime Minister, the Premier of Ontario, Minister of Indigenous Services, Minister of the Environment, Conservation and Parks, MP Palin Rashfaw, MPP Vic Fideli, the Assembly of First Nations, the Association of Municipality of Ontario, the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, and all Ontario municipalities. Questions, comments? Councillor Ross.
It says safe driving water, it should be safe drinking water in the first paragraph.
That I said drinking going?
Yeah.
Okay.
And also down on the third paragraph, the same thing. Should say drinking instead of driving. And my other comment is I think it's absolutely shameful that we have to introduce legislation for First Nations to have clean and safe drinking.
Okay, so the the motion hasn't changed, it's just a spelling mistake.
Yeah, spelling error.
Yep. Councillor LeVite.
The thing is, it's been passed before by the previous government that they were going to make sure that by a certain year, every reservations, every place that has a community, indigenous community will have safe drinking water, but it hasn't happened. Except for a few that they done. So I'm just wondering if there was a possibility when these letters goes out, I know we're supporting somebody, but is there a way that we can get a response back? To say that they are going to proceed with this, or will maybe look at it at a future date, just to give us an idea where they're sitting at with this?
Okay, so my my quick answer to that is when uh, when we looked at it last week, uh, Bill C sixty one wasn't uh, in the House of Commons, and then the government pro-rode, so they got to start it over. Oh, okay. So, and I think councillor Ross had brought that forward last meeting also. So it's a thing that happens when governments pro-rode, and I think municipalities putting pressure on them. They come good with past promises. It was never passed before, but now now there's a bill that's going to be passed, so. Just go stay tuned.
Okay, it's fine.
Councillor Tibere?
There is one other spelling mistake in the third paragraph. Says fire nations instead of First Nations. Just a spelling error.
You received an updated coffee today, that was corrected.
I got the old copy again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's no problem. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Carry. Seven point five, support for changes to municipal act. Need a mover and a second there. So moved by councillor Gardner, seconded by councillor Bigelow. Whereas the city of Kitchener has circulated the resolution to amend the municipal act permit municipalities the ability to grandfather out paper billing and to permit municipalities to establish fees for paper billing for new accounts. And whereas council of the corporation of town of Ottawa at their regular meeting of Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, stated its directive to support the city of Kitchener. Therefore, be it resolved that council of the town of matter was supports the city of Kitchener resolution to amend the municipal act to permit municipalities the ability to grandfather out paper billing and to permit municipalities to establish fees for paper billing for new accounts. And further that, a copy of this resolution be sent to the Premier of Ontario, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, and all Ontario municipalities. Questions, comments? Councillor Tibere.
I have a little problem with this uh, last time, before I read it over. I was concerned about seniors that don't have computers and never will have them. Uh, so, but I think what it says quite clearly after I read it over, it says to allow them to have the ability to grandfather it. So it doesn't mean they're all gonna do it, it just says that they they have the ability to do it, so. I it's a little bit clearer to me.
Yeah, it gives them the ability, and it also says that they'll grandfather it out.
Yeah.
So as seniors without uh, computers, let's say, uh, are move on, then, you know, the the new ones are going to be encouraged to have a
Yeah.
Electronic account, let's call it that. Could be. Good words. Yeah, you have the option, you have the option. But right now, as the, as it stands in the municipal act, you don't have that that option. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, call for a vote. All in favor? Carry. Seven point six, twenty twenty six NHL alumni hockey game liquor license approval. I need a mover and a second there. Moved by councillor LeVite, seconded by councillor Ross. Whereas the recreation department is holding an alumni hockey game in January twenty twenty six, along with liquor sales for the this event. And whereas the municipality will be applying for a liquor license for this event, and municipal staff will be organizing and working the bar area. Therefore, be it resolved that council of the town of Ottawa permits the sale of alcohol at the Mike Broden Arena and Community Centre on Saturday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty six, with the understanding that all rules and regulations will be followed as set by the Liquor Control Board of Ontario and permits municipal staff to run the bar area. And further that, council of the town of matter will endorses and supports the twenty twenty six NHL alumni hockey game as an event of municipal significance. Questions, comments? Councillor LeVite.
Today, I was making a delivery to the LCBO, and I was informed by the manager that they're going to be honoring licenses now, instead of you go to Nord Bay with it. Or, and they're also going to have a return bottle service. So we are very lucky that we can buy all our booze in one spot for now, in Madawal. After the the beer store will close after November second.
Good to know.
Uh, first class have their safe serve or whatever they call it.
They have to follow all rules and regulations.
Okay, thank you.
One more, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Uh. I have my my sip. If you need my services, I am available this. Okay.
Okay, well, good. Call for a vote. All in favor? Harry. Seven point seven, approval to attend twenty twenty six Roma Conference. I need a mover and a second there. The motion is moved by councillor LeVite, seconded by councillor Ross. Be resolved that council of the town of Ottawa approves the mayor and CEO treasurer to attend the annual Rural Ontario Municipal Association Roma Conference being held in Toronto from January eighteen to twentieth, twenty twenty six. Questions, comments? Councillor Tibere.
Could we at least add other designate, if something happens that when he's got court, does that, is that normal? Is that a normal procedure?
I see it as it's automatic, but if you feel better to have it in there, then we can have an amendment.
If it's automatic, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, every time you appoint the mayor to something, it's a mayor designate, but if I can't go, that's why we have a deputy mayor, and then you go down the line.
Thank you.
I guess a recorded vote too.
Any other comments, questions? Then, with the recorded vote, councillor LeVite.
Councillor LeVite?
Yes.
Councillor Ross?
Yes.
Councillor Tibere?
Yes.
Councillor Bigelow?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
And Mayor Belanchi?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously.
Which brings us to correspondence. So eight point one is from various municipalities and uh, support for the swim to survive training. Any comments? Councillor Tibere?
I think it's a no brainer. I mean, it's gonna be, they're asking for it to be part of the school curriculum, so. I I think it's great uh, that the kids learn how to swim and have water safety, so, yeah, I like it.
Any other comments? None? Uh, is everyone okay to bring it back as a supported item at your next meeting? Okay. Eight point two, uh, the township of Edward'sburg, Canadian. It's support for Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund continuation. Councillor Tibere.
I think also um, what they're asking here for is that they maintain their uh four hundred million dollar uh, commitment that they made, that they carry on over to. I think it's a good program and that uh uh, I fully support this.
Well, councillor Gardner?
Yeah, I think it's an easy one anytime we're asking the the government of Ontario to uh, step up and give funding opportunities, we're always looking for every uh dollar that we can get, so obviously the more that is available, the the better it is for the residents of Ontario. Um, obviously, recognizing that they can't keep everything going forever, otherwise we'd be dead up to our ears, but um, yeah, I I don't see the harm in asking them to continue this program, especially knowing that we have some big projects on the horizon.
Any other comments? I tend to agree with both these, uh, anything that can be beneficial to to the community, we we should endorse. So with your permission, we'll bring that back next meeting.
Yes.
Thanks. Eight point three, town of Oakville, insights for Embridge CEO Empire Club address. Comments? I I read it quickly, uh, I know we're gonna touch up on it again on old business. You know, it's important that we let them know that Matt was in the a phase of growth, and that we will need them to step up in our municipality. So you might touch up on on old business, so we'll move that for that. Uh. That is it. Correspondence, short one. Number nine, standing committee recommendations, there are none. Information report, uh, we
Mayor.
Eight point four, I'm sorry, I circled it, that's like. Uh, sorry, eight point four, town of Winby, my apologies again. Extended producer responsibility for blue box recycling collection and impacts the small businesses located in mixed use properties. Councillor Gardner?
Yeah, I think that's something that we're already kind of dealing with uh, in our community. Um, on our our main street, for example, we have a lot of businesses that have residential units up above and debate on what is residential and what isn't, and what can be picked up and what can't be picked up is very convoluted right now, it's it's a bit of a nightmare, the province is kind of throwing this at us uh, as a residential only program. Um, but it doesn't take into account those businesses that operate um kind of on both sides of it and and their property, so um, I I think that they need to have a look at that and and kind of figure that out in in their program that they've uh, put on to us.
Councillor LeVite?
I was under the impression when they went with the GFL, that they were doing residential and commercial aspects of it was our own local garbage collector that was doing it. So, what's this, what's the uh, was neck red?
Did we ask uh, our director of community services maybe to enlighten us on that?
Again, or Dexter?
Or whatever you decide, sure.
Dexter, do you want to take that?
Uh, you can, you can go ahead if you want, Paul, and then if there's anything to add, I can, I can add. Um, I'm just on the road right now, so you'll you'll give a clear response.
Okay, thank you. Uh, when it comes to recycling, the municipality's responsibility rests with residential pickup and residential pickup home. Okay, uh, that was a bit of an anomaly around the province, because we are one of the rare municipalities that we've included commercial pickup as part of the residential pickup. But that should never happen, but that's just the way life has been here in Madawal. Now that the program is over, it's very clear that commercial is commercial, residential has been picked over by the province through circular materials and specifically GFL here in the the Madawal area. And that there's the commercial entities that are to find their own solution when it provide. That is, they are some of the problems.
Councillor Tibere?
We we were never responsible for commercial, I agree with that. Because Mr. LaFner had his own arrangements with all the businesses in our community. What my question would be is can, in the future, Mr. LaFner maintain that service for the uh, businesses, and would we allow it to happen, or are we um I remember that our community service person said, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Derek, but said at the last meeting that this is something they're trying to work out in the future. Wouldn't it be sensible for us to say, well, let Mr. LaFner and the businesses work it out? Why would we even get involved?
Yeah, you are, you are one hundred percent councillor, and uh, right now in the transition period, October, November, December, province through circular materials through GFL are making arrangements to pick up the commercial, but that will cease December thirty first, and come January one, then either the commercial will make extend the arrangement with GFL, or contract somebody with Paul LaFner here to say, please pick up my recycling, so you are a friend. And it is totally
Yeah, great.
And there is, um, if I may, there is one minor adjustment, so uh, and this is, this is new news as of Friday, but uh, GFL is unable to accommodate for a weekly pickup from some of our heavier commercial users. And so therefore, they have been removed from the non-eligible list and allowed to seek recycling services on the free market. And Paul LaFner has been made aware of which commercial entities have been taken off the list, so he is able to approach them, and they're able to approach whoever they want to pick up their uh, their commercial recycling. And uh, and and just to add that this uh, this resolution uh, really does separate the, uh, councillor Gardner spoke on it. It separates the, uh, right now the program separates the commercial and residential, whereas the, you know, the tough part is most of the upstairs of Main Street residential unit or commercial units are residential. And the program, particularly the contractor for the program, is tracking what they believe to be commercial recycling versus uh, residential recycling, and and right now they're picking it up, but in in at some point, they they will cease to pick that up when they know it's commercial.
So you're okay?
Yep.
Well, councillor Tibere, anything else?
And so it was confusing when I started, but.
And talk about it again later, and yes.
Yes, it's coming up in our new business again, so. Great, we're good to move along?
Yep.
Okay, so number nine, standing committee recommendations, there are none. Uh, ten information reports, uh, ten point one is the first one. It's to provide emergency evacuation facilities to the township of Capital Cameron. Record twenty five dash sixty two R, and the uh, report was prepared by uh, by uh, Mr. Sheffield. Report twenty five dash sixty two R, and the report was prepared by, by Mr. Sheffield. Floris George.
A little bit of background, so like, we all know on June 21st, that is by the storm in Chantilly Park, which was Alvin's evacuation center, which was right in the middle of it. Received that night, Steve, word from CMC with the CAO that wanted to use our evacuation center at the arena, which, you know, we allowed them to under short circumstances, which ended up works out very well. So a week later, we got an email from Papinow Cameron's CMC, you know, asking they want to do the same thing. They don't, they do not have any back weight center located in their plan anywhere in, in Pat. So they were asking if we could, they could use ours in case of an emergency, you know, if it's in their district. And she wanted to know how to go about it. And so we got together, myself and Amy, and then, and I contacted our field officer, Diane Ross, and she suggested that we do up an agreement. So that's what the clerk and I started doing and on September 8th, you guys received the formal request and correspondence and council director staff to begin the process. And so as I said, I did, we had a discussion where I feel the option, she definitely suggested to do so. The CMC panel and their staff did up a plan, we did a planning myself and went back and forth and we're in agreement with that. So now it's, it's in discussion and it's up, you know, you guys want to allow them to use our evacuation center. I matter.
Questions for Mr. Sheffield, Counselor LeVie?
I think it's a good idea and get recognized by their council also on the draft that they will participate, whatever the cost is to take care of whatever incidents that happens. And it's very important because they're all our neighbors. And we've got relatives and families that live out there also. So I think it's a good move and I will support this.
It'll be the same thing as, oh, like, well, I'll keep track of all the deep dollar bills, everything, and then when she's done, it'd be people to take care of all that after. But yeah, in, in the state of emergency, it's important to get them in there.
Any other questions or comments, Counselor Gardner?
The only thing is in schedule A, there's the cost and reimbursement. So any direct costs incurred by the town lists them in supporting the township's use of the arena or alternate facility or alternate facility should be documented and may be subject to reimbursement by the township or otherwise eligible for province emergency funding. I just I think it should be, will be subject. I'm all for helping people. But again, like, I think part of being your own municipality is being responsible for the emergencies in your area and helping. And, and if we were to use their services, I hope that we would be paying them and reimbursing them. For example, this last one, what I understand is we didn't receive anything for, so that might have changed.
Okay, receiving a small amount.
Okay, so that, that changed since the last time that I was informed, but the last I knew that we weren't going to be paid for, for what we did for the last emergency, which isn't the, the point of it. In the emergency, you need to help people and help our neighbors and help our families and families and stuff like that, but you know, I think the least they could do is cover our costs if we have to bring in extra staffing and stuff like that, so. That's the only thing. I just don't like that with me.
Can you tell me exactly where in the document?
Number six on schedule A.
Okay, six. It may be subject, your, your suggestion should be, will be.
Will be.
Okay, subject. Does that present an issue?
Well, they will.
Like, give me an, an example, someone that, where it wouldn't.
It was our emergency also.
So we could share it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's your emergency. I agree with counselor. Very, but, but, you know, the taxpayer, now you're not out to it's the burden of the boss and all that. That we.
I'm not going to die on, like, if it's something that's agreed to on their end and it's already gone to their, I'll, I'll live with it. I'm just.
I do have a question on it too, is, and again, you find it in there. Alternate facility, what, what are we talking about as an alternative facility? Are we talking like here, the info center?
Yeah, it, it all depends. Like, we are all, we don't really have an alternative. Our, our main facility is the arena.
Correct.
And so all of it were planned by the schools and.
Okay.
But the schools are trying to stay away from that, stay clear of that, no?
Yeah. Okay, yes, Amy?
So it would depend. We put or alternate in there too, because if it is a bigger emergency where we're using our arena, um, an alternate could be, say, the curling club, depending on the size and the amount of people that pass and over would have to send over as well. So as Wayne and I were talking, we do have to keep in mind the the amount of people that our facilities can hold as well. So that's why we put or alternate in there.
Like, our, our mentality would take precedent over our evacuation center. If the dual, dual version, the same, same type of our, you know, we would take precedent over our evacuation center, for sure. We would try and find them all.
Well, June 21st could have been exactly that, you know, and the Papinow Cameron got hit hard also. So they, they could have needed us also. So I'm, I'm not surprised and I'm not questioning it. I just, that's what I thought it was, and I just want to ensure that, you know, and imagine what you guys are presenting.
Now, the ways the storm dropped, I know it easily happened. It's happening more and more, like 19 years, 20 years that I've been here, it's never happened, but it was close, like you say, it was close and due.
Well, that's what I just worked on a document and that's what we claim that we've just improved four states of emergencies in the last 20 years alone. You know, so.
Yeah. I was a little concerned alternate sites too, where and I'm just gonna use one that I know, because I was involved in 2007 when the burst at Mattawa, the downburst. At Mattawa? Are you sure? Okay, I know it was one week before, four, in four of your days. The Legion had put on meals to feed the, the workers and the hydro guys and the town guys. So I'm just wondering if that would be alternate, that, you know, if that would be covered in the costs. You understand what I'm saying? Like the Legion, say, puts on a a meal. They do it all the time. They did it for some of the people for, at the arena last time. So I was just wondering, would that be an, an alternate?
I, I don't think so, because alternate has to be our property.
Exactly.
Like, it doesn't mean the Legion can't step up. It's not what it means. But we can't speak for the Legion, is what the, the document says. Counselor Gardner?
Just, I, I think then that they would have to have an agreement with the Legion for the same thing, and it might be might be worth everybody looking at that, because I know in every emergency, they have stepped up. So it might be worth us looking at maybe having an agreement with people like the Legion as well for our, for our sake too, is, is our community.
That's what I was going to, why we haven't named it, but on evacuations, there is, it involves sleeping also. Sleeping, washing, shower, so. No, policy at that also.
But in, in our bylaws and in our contract and our agreement, we can only speak for what we own. You know, we can certainly recommend, you know, other things too, but yeah, I get that. No, I'm, I'm full, full support.
That's okay, you're hungry.
Oh, I'm not. My bowels have been doing that. Moved by Counselor Gardner, seconded by Counselor LeVie. Being resolved that. Sorry, anybody else have any questions or comments before I move along?
I agree with the statement that Counselor Gardner made about May, maybe chair, I think it must be her. Should, will, will be.
Will, yeah. Okay, because I, I think every time we've had a an emergency, we've submitted costs either to Hendra or in the last case to the municipality we helped, right? And we take it from there. So it shouldn't be a surprise that we, we would submit, you know, at, at least our costs. We're not trying to make money. Just trying to cover our costs and not put it on the backs of our taxpayers.
So like that, then we could, you know, amend that, that schedule by saying, you know, will be reimbursed or, and then bring it back, say, listen.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I think you're on the right, right track, Paul?
Yeah, and I think for the council, just by changing the words will, because the word subject to is in there, that doesn't mean that it's automatic. Like, legislation will say subject to HST. Well, if, if the federal government passes a motion that they have a three month holiday on HST, even though it says you charge HST, you don't. So subject to just means you're going to analyze it. And you have, you're allowed to charge it. You have a conversation and say, okay, let's go 50/50 on this or 60/40 or whatever it is. So, but, but the word made, Counselors Gardner, what? Applies, he might not. Well, that's not very strong language. I think it should say will. And then you do the analysis.
Yeah.
Subject to.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Hey, any other questions or comments?
It's already been answered.
Amy?
So in the resolution, I would then suggest taking so that we will return at the next regular meeting of council, because we will have to go back to Papinow Cameron with the revised schedule changing the made to will.
So if I replace the next with just eighth?
Yes.
So catch. Jordan, no, no. So moved by Counselor Gardner, that's what I read. And seconded by Counselor LeVie. Being resolved that, council of the town of Mattawa receives report number twenty five dash sixty two R titled, provide emergency evacuation facilities to township of Papinow Cameron. And further that, council approves the draft bylaw to enter into an agreement with the township of Papinow Cameron for facility use during an emergency. And further that, council directs staff to return at a regular meeting of council with the final bylaw for its passing. Recorded vote, recorded vote requested by Mr. LeVie. Final chance for comments and questions? None?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counsel Ross?
Yes.
Counsel Beal?
Yes.
Counsel Tiber?
Yes.
Mayor Wonsay?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously.
Okay, next one is ten point two. It's physician recruitment committee report. It's report number twenty five dash sixty three R, and it was prepared by myself. So I think everybody knows the background of the physician recruitment committee's purpose. Some of the stuff that was reported at the last meeting, just to let you know, also, we, it's kind of a timing. But we, I had a meeting, our quarterly meeting this afternoon at the hospital, so what I'm giving you the information on is the last meeting, not, not what happened today. That'll be kind of coming forth soon. So the physician recruiter continues to utilize emergency department LoFAM program, the EDLP portal, which is typically utilized when our physicians or local, locums are unavailable. We did have a potential closure in July and the situation was monitored very closely and resulted in not happening, which is a good thing. Uncertainty remains around the future of the LDLP program. Proposed changes are causing concerns amongst physicians who may be less inclined to pick up shifts under the new structure. An arbitrator award was announced in early May, but we were still waiting on the formal funding letter. There is hope for an increase, but nothing has been confirmed. We are presently working on three service agreements in preparation for upcoming transitions. You're all aware of who they are. Taylor Wilkins began working in our emergency room in July 2025 and plans to start in the family practice in January 2026. DJ Hull is expected to join our team in July 2026. And Adam Ritchie is scheduled to join the Mattawa Hospital in July 27th or 28th. It remember, it remains to be seen what direction the ministry will take regarding future models of care. There may be a value in revisiting interest amongst first year medical students, particularly in Sudbury, given the recent changes. The one thing I heard today is that our committee and our recruiter with some members at the hospital will be attending a eight in the morning till 10 at night workshop slash recruitment practice for students in, in the Sudbury at the Northern Ontario School of Medicine. So it's still moving, moving along, looking for more candidates. Currently, EDPL shifts are posted 21 days in advance. It's a change from the previous 45 day window, meaning that when they find out there's going to be a closure, they don't have the big window they used to have to work. You know, you find out December 2nd, we're going to have a possible closure. You've got to start working on it right away. And that's, that's the change that, you know, you don't have the luxury of a full month and a half to, to work through it. Physician recruiter also received an email from a local community member who expressed the interest of joining the physician recruitment committee. Those present at the meeting discussed membership and all agreed that it should be limited to those who are representing a municipality or organization that are financially invested in the initiative. Okay, and it was acknowledged also that any interested individual can always attend the council meeting through their process and bring them out. And then, you know, we could take their questions and concerns and we could bring it to the, to the committee table. We also had a look at the committee's terms and reference today. The CEO reviewed it and then brought a draft forward today. Meetings are held on a quarterly basis for your information. Council of the Corporation Town of Mattawa approved the five year annual financial commitment of thirteen thousand, seven sixty nine and fifty four cents per year for the Mattawa physician recruitment initiatives. This annual, annual contribution began in 2024 with our final payment in 2028 payable in January of each year. So that's our cost. The CFO provided an overview of the budget planning and recruitment fund. The year end report for for September, the end of September is included in the report, while overall operating budget remains under budget, the committee is incentive initiative. I know it sounds like we're saying the opposite here, but if everything remains the way it is, you know, we're, we're, we're okay. But we're finding out that some of the doctors are requesting their, their money a little sooner, so it has a little bit of fluctuation in, in the budget, not, not overall, but and and that's explained in the line there, notably 25,000 of the overage was attributed to an early incentive payout. Looking ahead, the, the question was raised whether sufficient funds are available to support recruitment of another physician. The, the draft budget projects through 2728 with a forecasted shortfall of approximately 60,000 by 2028. This would mark the first time that the program runs a deficit primarily due to incentive commit commitments. Again, it's kind of contradictory. By what we know today, by what everything is at the end of twenty, and that, no, at the end of 26, we could show that we'd be showing a shortfall of 17,000. Committee is trying to forecast what's it going to look like in 28.
Twenty, okay.
And if it's, everything keeps the way, you got to multiply that by three. That's where the 60,000 comes, comes around. But all the years that this committee and the, the initiative of But all the years that this committee and the uh, the initiative that's in the move forward, it was a break even with the municipal contribution and the hospital contribution. Um. If a fourth physician were successfully recruited, there may be an opportunity to extend cost. Potentially with renewed municipal support, so in other words, they're saying, we might get another one, we need more money. And I told, I informed the committee that the town's financial resources are tight. And Papino Cameron echoed this concern. Uh, we we highlighted that municipalities are under strain due to increased downloading from the province and rising cost just to maintain existing services, so. I I put them on guard saying it's not a a gimme. You know, but uh, let let's see what we can do, let's see what we need and then we can talk about it then. But I I told him, you know, it's not unlimited funds. Uh, there was a discussion around the feasibility of a shared incentive. And whether council might consider splitting the twenty five thousand incentive. You know, maybe, we'll we'll see what happens. And the present CEO suggested exploring strategic approach moving forwards, which other ideas were uh, put on the table today that we have to explore further. Uh, attachments are the Physician Recruitment Budget Comparison at September thirtieth. And if you have any questions on it, I'll try and answer them, if I can't answer them, I'll get them answered. And uh, it's recommended that council receives and accept this report. Question, comment, councillor Levi?
The uh, the sixty thousand dollars by the year twenty twenty eight. And uh, is a shortfall, so are they going to be applying to the province for sport or or this is going to be burdened by the the three municipalities?
This has nothing to do with the hospital, has everything to do with the Physician Recruitment Committee. And that that's that's our finances.
So then my other one is the twenty five thousand incentive, so that mean uh, split between the three of us, you're looking at eight thousand five hundred bucks.
Well, the it's a weighted assessment, so.
Oh, I see, okay.
In there at the top of your spreadsheet. It tells you what the uh, municipalities are contributing. Well, it's not, it's not a, you know, divided by six kind of thing.
Is that a per capita?
Yeah, per capita and other, it's a weighted assessment, same one that's used for cash.
I have a problem with uh, that. I think I mentioned it while we were discussing council home. Is that Papino Cameron? Uh, according to Stats Canada, has a population of eleven hundred let one thousand, one hundred and some people. But the only uh, amounts that were taken was eight hundred and eight hundred fifty nine, but their population is around eleven hundred, so when we're doing a weighted, I think we should bring that bring that up when we're discussing that.
Yeah, so I I did say in my report that today that was tabled and uh, this committee started I'd say ten years ago, probably, you know, and what was good then is maybe not good enough now, so that's all going through a revision. Councillor Gardner?
Yeah, and just uh, to councillor uh T Bear. Councillor T Bear's comment, um. I'm always one of the first ones to to call people who aren't paying the share, but in this case, um uh, the neighboring municipality that you're speaking of is, um, they're contributing uh round numbers twelve thousand two hundred dollars and we're contributing thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars, so it's actually pretty well, um, fair, so it's probably taken to to account other things than just the per capita. Um, but in this one, it it does seem pretty fair and uh, just to mention, there are more than three municipalities that are contributing, there's actually five that contribute plus the hospital, so um, we have, we have some that are quite a ways away that are contributing to and not a large amount, they're contributing something.
And again, this is all on the table for for review. Then with the question, okay, can I get a mover in a second?
Good before, sir.
Move by councillor T Bear, seconded by councillor Levi. Being resolved that council in town of Madowa receives report number twenty five dash sixty three R title. Physician Recruitment Committee Report, questions, comments? None, all in favor, carried. Next one is ten point three. Ten point three, prepared by myself, it's titled Ontario Small Urban Municipalities. It's awesome, twenty twenty five. And the report number is twenty five dash sixty four R. So this one here, I, there's, there's a lot, I took notes during the uh, the conference. So the the background, uh, just to give you what what awesome is about, it's uh first of all, participants from Ontario counties, small cities and towns attended the twenty twenty five Ontario Small Urban Municipality, awesome. It was hosted by the town of Collingwood from April thirtieth to May second and at the Georgian Bay Hotel and Vacation Drive, uh, but vacation in drive. Uh, municipal leaders gathered to explore solutions during economic and political uncertainty. Uh, the awesome conference brought us together at an important time. Uh, since January twenty twenty five tariff threats have disrupted global and local economies. It has created new municipal challenges and deepened existing ones. Awesome represents counties, small cities and towns that are vital links between rural and urban Ontario. These are communities strive to deliver city style services, preserve small town appeal and protect protect natural heritage. Awesome supports dozens of vibrant counties, small cities and towns that connect urban and rural Ontario. While no two communities are alike, small urban municipalities share uh, face shared challenges and opportunities that can be both urban and rural in nature. Awesome work is driven by an executive committee with members hailing from small, single tier cities, suburban towns, rural municipalities and counties. The executive committee all sit on the AMO board, Small Urban Caucus. Awesome's advocacy work is supported by staff at AMO. It's held each spring and the annual awesome conference is a significant opportunity for municipal leaders to come together, learn from export experts and work together to address the unique challenges facing Ontario small urban communities. Over and above the uh, conference, uh, I took a tour of uh, their waterfronts. It's uh, it's on the Georgian Bay, it's huge. And I left everyone with a bag of notepad and a pen and uh, their plan for their uh, their waterfront development. Uh, something I want to bring to your your uh, interest here is it's a fifty million dollar plan. So it's not peanuts, so when we're being told, you know, our small uh Marina is going to cost in the millions, well, I can believe it because I was there, I saw what they're doing, they're they're going bigger, but they consider themselves uh, small.
Small.
You know, and then I sit there and I go, oh my god, you know, like, we're 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 not even two thousand and what what are they, I go by memory, uh in thirty seven thousand, like something like that.
Something like that, yes.
So it it's amazing, and I know Paul and I, we look at each other every time, North Bay's there. North Bay is considered small urban, you know, so sometimes you wonder why we don't stand a chance, well, it it explains it. So anyways, feel free to look at that, that's for information purposes only, I thought it was neat, I thought it was a worthwhile visit. Gave me a, picked up a few ideas, but uh, it it's huge, it's huge and it's beautiful. So keynote speakers spoke on the impact of tariffs on Ontario's municipal governments and how to foster healthy local democracies. Other sessions focus on sharing innovative solutions and insights as the key priorities for Ontario small urban communities. These include AMO's groundbreaking homelessness study. Water and wastewater infrastructure, affordable housing and cyber risk. Reason I drew that in my report is and last week, we had a meeting and we're thinking that maybe uh, awesome is not one that we recommend that we should keep going to because everything that Roma and AMO does is regurgitated there.
Oh, okay.
So everybody that's a a part of awesome sits on, sits on AMO. So it it keeps coming back, you know, and uh this time, especially this time around, I heard it in Toronto at Roma, I heard it again at AMO in Ottawa. And I heard it in between and Collingwood and so it's uh, you know, are are we getting a real big bang for our buck there? No, and la- later in the report, I'll touch up on uh you know, delegations, there's no delegations at awesome, so there's no opportunity to ministries and that, and that's why uh, when I I talk with the CEO, you know, ma- maybe we should uh, consider going elsewhere and where where we can make a a bigger difference. So the plenary program consists on many topics and all I did here, I didn't elaborate on any, but it's all stuff that came up, so. We attended the official conference opening, uh, following the land declaration. We were welcomed with remarks from Mayor Yvonne Hamlin, town of Collingwood and uh, mayor and uh, awesome chair Jamie McGarvey, uh, the mayor of the town of Perry Sound. They talked about, uh, we were right into uh, fresh uh, new election federally. They talked about the new federal leader and highlights they were looking for were economic restructure and building homes. Uh, AMO Executive Director talked about social and economic prosperity review, the trade barriers, improvement for prosperity. Uh, they talked about membership education, development charges that can't be replaced by property taxes. Uh, they talked about homelessness, fix provincial system and indigenous reconciliation. Uh, Roma Chair made some remark, that was from Krista Lowry, the mayor of the municipality of Mississippi Mills. Uh, she finds that municipalities are treading water, they require funding. Which uh, once you get funding, it leads to gratitude, harmony and balance. Uh, provincial municipal fiscal framework there again. Update on insights and actions arising from AMO's groundbreaking homeless study, fix and broken provincial policy and homelessness in uh in Ontario. That's what I mean by, you're hearing the same stuff that you already heard at uh, at AMO. Alicia Newfeld, the senior manager of policy AMO, has talked about municipalities under pressure report. Uh, Ontario's water and wastewater services, uh, another report, a path forward. Project value advocacy, policy development and strategic guide. Uh, leveraging limited resources for big results in affordable housing. You know, they talk about housing corporation partnerships and collaboration. Offer proposals from the municipal partnership in affordable housing, innovation and creativity. Political will and strong budget commitments. Um, municipal and financial support, and I heard a very interesting quote right there. Everybody wants change, but everybody, everything must remain the same. I found that very right off, you know, we all want change, but we don't want to change anything. Uh, and you know, the the beware of NIMBY that I hear probably at every conference, uh the NIMBY is not in my backyard syndrome, so uh, they they keep bringing that up. Uh, they talked about business improvement associations, the B I As. Uh, it's important to have guidance documents if you're going to have one. Uh, memorandum of understanding between towns and B I A, uh, main streets matter. Economic development colla- collaboration, which is something we started uh, initiating. Challenges and opportunities, government funding, have a plan. If not, if if not now, when? You know, it's always time to start planning. The uh truth of slogans out there on uh, you know, shop local and uh, they talked about disposable income. Uh, the candidate we want reflections on the path forward. Uh, Donald Trump has upended the Canadian politics. They they think that we have two choices, seize the opportunity or give up. And the notable notable risks were tariffs, sovereignty and Kuzma negotiations. Uh, Michael Schreiner, leader of the Ontario Green Party. He called for an urgent provincial action to terrorist proof Ontario's economy, invest in local communities and fix the growing prices of care across small urban municipality. He highlighted the need to invest in made in Ontario clean energy, build up sustainable industries and protect farmland and the nature that shields communities from floods and extreme weather. He took aim at the four government's priorities, criticizing wasteful project design exclusively for the GTA like a tunnel under the four O one and the two point two billion subsidy for a foreign owned spa at Ontario Place. While, all this while rural hospitals closed and municipalities struggled to pay for local roads and bridges. At the heart of his message was a call for the uh, new deal for municipalities, one that includes uploading costs to the province that have been unfairly pushed onto municipalities and local property taxes. Uh, dedicated funding to address the mental health, addiction and homeless crisis. Predictable, sustainable infrastructure funding for municipalities. A new funding formula to support hospitals and schools in smaller towns and cities. He also emphasized the need to build two million homes. And he said, I quoted him, let's build homes people can afford in the places they want to live, near the people they love, without paving over the farmland that feeds us. Uh, following him was the Honorable Rob Flack, the new Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. And uh, he talked about the province's commitment to build one point five million homes, so a difference of a half a half a bit, a half a billion. A half a million, sorry, uh, those homes built by twenty thirty one. And his new slogan was the application of the three S's. Strengthen, speed up and simple simplify the legislation. Uh, municipalities provide services to Ontarians that they rely on every day. The fiscal framework that enables municipalities to do this work is broken. Failing to fix the problem fails residents, small businesses, health and public safety partners and major industries. Awesome, true AMO, calls on Premier Ford to do what taxpayers expect. Work together with municipal governments and get it done for Ontarians. Strong and sustainable municipalities need safe, healthy, affordable and prosperous communities through investment in what Ontarians care about the most, including housing. Municipalities own and operate half a trillion dollars of public infrastructure. Over the next ten years, they're planning for more than two hundred and fifty billion of capital expenditures, which around hundred billion related to growth. Healthcare in twenty twenty two, municipalities across Ontario spent three point three billion on health despite only receiving one point eight billion in provincial grants. When public health, long term care and ambulance spending don't keep pace with need, we see the impacts in hospitals across the province. Cost of living, Ontario has the second highest property taxes in Canada and they continue to rise as municipalities deal with inflation, growth and issues like homelessness. Property taxpayers, including seniors on fixed income and struggling small businesses, simply cannot afford to pay more. Public safety, municipal resources fund police force. The impacts of inadequate approaches to mental health, addiction and homelessness challenge but put police uh, resources under strain. Awesome, again, true AMO, continues to ask the provincial government to sit down with municipalities and work together on the social and economic prosperity review. This should include a joint review of revenues, costs and financial risk as well as an analysis of Ontario's infrastructure, investment and service delivery needs. The goal is to update the provincial municipal fiscal relationship to support strong economic foundation, sustainable communities and quality of life. While these conversations are already happening in the media and at the dinner tables, a comprehensive discussion needs to happen between both orders of government. AMO's uh, MOU with the provincial government is the ideal framework for a formal collaboration where we can work together to achieve real results for Ontarians. The municipal fiscal sustainability challenge is urgent, province wide and central to Ontario's social and economic prosperity. On behalf of municipalities, AMO is calling on the provincial government to make investments that will improve the quality of life of Ontarians in communities across the province. Municipalities need a provincial partner that will sustainably invest in public infrastructure to support growth and prove Sustainably invest in public infrastructure to support growth, improve transportation. And prepare for the impacts of climate change. Reduce the province's 4 billion reliance on municipal revenue to fund provincial programs. Like health and social services, so municipal tax dollars can go towards supporting thriving communities. Take action on the root causes of homelessness through investments in mental health and addictions programming. And improve income security that allows people to keep a roof over their heads. Uh, I've already mentioned in there, there are no delegation meetings at Ossen. Which removes that unique opportunity for our council to engage with ministers. Parliamentary assistants and senior Ontario government officials on local matters that impact our community. Uh, the Ossen Executive Committee appreciate the recent budget relief that. Ontario Government committed to assisting municipalities in managing the unanticipated budget pressures. Related to OPP billing. The financials support for 2025 was very important. As small urban municipalities are facing increasing financial and legislative pressures in many areas. We will need to turn our attention to understand what the OPP billing pressure means for us beyond 2025. Ossen is eager to understand what the government is planning to manage. How to plan and manage this and support municipalities beyond the coming budget planning year. Executive Committee also discuss ongoing challenges. Small urban municipalities are facing and working to be community infrastructure needs against our economies of scale. It is understood that the ability to meet our communities' housing needs against legislative requirement. Community growth and our resources is a formula that does not work. Awesome, on our behalf, awesome on the behalf of our municipal members and colleagues. Ask for the government to review these challenges and to step in to assist in a meaningful and sustainable way. Uh, the financial implication to send us to this is the registration cost. Per deemed accommodations and travel and meal expenses. And the policy that or relative policy legislation that applies to this was. An approval by council resolution and I'm looking to have this, uh. I recommend that council receive and accept this report. I didn't mean to bore you with all that, but I couldn't come up with it, actually. And I was selective in what I put in there, it started, there was seven or eight pages and I condensed. Question comments? Counselor in the mic.
Did a good job summarizing the whole thing, it's looks like it's very repetitive. And your comments of saying that you're not gonna get anybody from the ministry. Uh, member of parliament or anything at these meetings, so I don't know if it's worthwhile going or not, so.
I I think that's why the CEO in his last recommendation suggested that we we only had the Ossen.
So I I agree, so I'll move it that we. Accept your report.
Counselor to back.
You know, you you, I read over this a couple of days ago. And. I'm thinking, I agree with you about repetitiveness, we have, we.
Repetitive.
Okay, you know what I mean, anyway, um. The thing is that we have AMO, we have Phenom, we have Ossen, we have. You know, and I hear all this stuff being talked about on every, where the hell is the uh, action? You know what I mean, that's, where is the provincial government gonna step up and say, okay, let's sit down? And talk it over with the municipalities. You know, like, there's no, there's no action to all these discussions. We all agree with all the discussions, we agree with everything that they all say. When is the action gonna happen?
Question you gotta ask them. Actually, actually, the province has been invited a multitude of times to sit with AMO. And they refuse, okay, and. Eventually, it's gonna happen, I think, but maybe that's a, that's their way of doing it, they'll get so tired of hearing it, they'll say, okay, let's do that.
Yeah, I think that's a lack of action on the provincial part and that, no matter who's in power, conservatives, liberals, NDP. They're all the same, all the money goes to the big urban areas where the votes are, or the big areas where the votes are. And nothing comes to us, little guys that are starving, that are starving.
And you have to believe me when I tell you that we make that message loud and clear.
Sure you have, I I don't doubt that one a little bit, but you know, we gotta have some action soon. But we're gonna go dead, we've, we're, we're.
And and at the beginning, I said, you know, a lot of uh. People under the small urban umbrella, we share a lot of the same issues. You know, and that's one of the issues, you know, when when are you gonna finally hear us and, you know, do the right thing? You know, this council asked them to take over OPP costing. You know, I talked to the minister eyeball to eyeball, and his first answer came out again, not gonna happen. But we'll try something, you know, so it's continuously going and. That that's, that's a decision for this table to make, you know, when when do we think it's enough and. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Counselor Gardner?
Squeaky wheel gets the grease, so we just gotta keep on squeaking.
That's it? Any other comments? Okay, I need someone to second the motion. That was long, wasn't it?
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, moved by Counselor in the mic, seconded by Counselor there. Being resolved that, Council of the Town of Manawer receives report number 25-64, our title. Ontario Small Urban Municipality, 2025, questions, comments? None, all in favor? Carry it. Uh, 10.4, closure and sale of unopened road allowances, report 25-65. Prepared by the CEO treasure, Laura Ziers-Bow.
Thank you, your worship, uh, so we are talking about public during sale of unopened road allowances. So specifically, those are identified as James Street and Rankin Street and Peter Street. For the first two, James and Rankin, already come before council a few years back now and so, for it to do so. For whatever reasons, these files didn't get quite completed. And all the steps that's in the the road closure policy have been followed except the execution of those sales. And one thing, and that is the public notice. To tell all the municipalities who actually are gonna close the roads and we have to do that as per our own policy. So it's recommended here that we do that. The third one, the Peter Street, has not come here to council in and of itself. There's been other movements along that area because, uh, I shown on the attachment there when they, you can see the. The little map for Peter Street, the one half of the road allowance that touches Park Street. Council has already closed that some years ago. Uh, and now we're talking about the other remaining, you know, almost half of that, a little allowance which is a part that goes to Manawar. Or the access from Manawar, and so now there is an offer to purchase that property. So on that one, I think we we need to follow, uh, the, the, you know. The recommendations in our policy, we need to go to the budding neighbor, give them their chance on their half and so on. And and then if there is no interest, then we can move with the, make sure, I I left that documentation on the file that they're not interested. And then we move to get the cradle done, as per what our policy says and. And then engage in that, uh, you know, go through that sale and, uh. Uh, but I thought, since we're gonna go to council for the first two, we might as well go to, sorry, sorry, to the public. You might as well go for all three, let the public know our intentions if you're okay, uh, for the closing and and sale of. Uh, Peter Street, that would need those three, and I've given you some information. Uh, what kind of dollars are involved, it's not a lot of money, but the the James Street valuation was came in at 20,000. The Rankin one for seven, and the Peter Street will have to be determined, because we haven't gone out and do that, but we'll do that. And, uh, yeah, you have before you the the public notice that went out in. This past weekend's reporter, it's gonna go again in the recorder this coming weekend, they have to do it twice, and then we have to wait at least a week. And then, so then, uh, we're then inviting the public. To come on the regular meeting on November the 10th, and they can ask for, uh. Uh, making their concerns, uh, you know. Address the clerk and say, nobody's like to speak to that matter if there are any, but this is the opportunity to be speak, and then, uh. And when the, uh, there are no issues, then, uh, recommending that, uh. Council directs myself to complete those sales, those three identified properties in accordance with.
I have two questions.
I do too.
They just don't wanna forget them, so on the 10th. We have a regular agenda, is there gonna be something added to the agenda at the start or?
Well, it's gonna be, uh, people have to, because it's not, you know, as per policy procedure, it's not just sitting in the audience and asking questions. They have to either send in their writing, in writing, to the clerk, or ask for a delegation and they are coming, so. There will be a diagram on the agenda that will be.
Okay, so to speak, they have to be on the petition part, okay?
Or send in their documented.
That's perfect, that's the answer, the other answer I have, and I'm looking at your diagram here, Peter Street. Um, I see that there's one, two, three. Part of the third property that. My understanding is when you close a road allowance, sell it, it's 50/50, right, on each side?
Right.
Okay, so right there, we have a, we have one property that doesn't really. Part of it would be 50/50, but the other part, they're the only ones there, and the last property, or call it the very first one. There's nobody on the other side, what happens in that case?
So just maybe you can reference by numbers there, can you see the numbers?
Here, I can bring them up.
551?
And.
551 and 555?
Right.
Okay, so if you look. That would be, uh, east.
Yeah.
You know, there's no one there, so do they get to buy the whole one? Like, I don't understand how that works, like, the person that wants to buy probably owns five, is it 565, the triangle one?
Yeah, right.
Right? So all the way through to to their tip, you know, they they have a neighbor. So the 50/50 would apply, what about the rest of it?
Yeah, so there is, so first of all, your first question on 551.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think if you draw the line down the middle there, so they would have first dibs on the part going to. Their section going to Manawar.
Okay.
And then if you draw a perpendicular to the end of the one that is across the street at 565. Uh, you know, they have the, uh. Uh, first dibs on, you know, the east side of Peter Street, so I think what you're asking is that, that portion across from. Sorry, I said.
Can you see the numbers?
You're talking about the empty lot, right?
Yeah, so the person at 565 going towards Manawar, so there, there is nobody on the Manawar side.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, so there's a little tip, and you know, I'll get, I'll get clarification, but I would think that logic dictates that. There is no budding neighbor there to bid on that part, so you would think that that little chip land there would be to the current owner. Uh, that is touching, but I'll be that there.
Okay, that could be something that'll come up and it just dawned on me now.
Yeah.
And I've looked.
It's a funky little street there.
Yeah, okay, I'm good with that, Counselor Gardner?
So, my concern is, uh, is two things, so one, the the Peter Street. It looks like you're indicating the half of it, is it the intention to go all the way to Park Street, or is that property already severed and owned?
Where, where, where it's colored there?
There, there is, yeah, there is no lot number, but I'm gonna say it would probably be 300. Um, between 299 and 301, has that already been severed before and and?
Yeah, so that's, that's colored from Park Street to the part of the unopened road allowance, that's white, council has already sold that.
So there's no possibility of ever opening this road anyways.
Right.
Okay, and then my second question is, um, so that one's a little bit easier because there's still road access. Um, 561, 559, um. They, they don't have road access, so I'm assuming that they're currently owned by the.
That's all the same owner.
That's all the same owner?
All the same owner, and that, and that same owner is the one who's seeking to buy that road allowance.
Okay.
Okay, well, that explains it now.
That, that's okay, because that was my concern, I didn't want to log anybody in that owns land.
The ones on the, on the Manawar side. And the ones right at the start at 551, those are the two neighbors that we need to be careful of, that they're not left. You know, without having to say.
Which ones again, Paul?
The one at the very start is Manawar, 551.
On top, yeah.
Okay, so that's an abiding neighbor, right, so that, and then the one on the left-hand side at Manawar, the triangle?
Yes.
Okay, so those are the two that we have to approach, make sure that they're, uh, not interested in participating in this process.
And the other, is he already owned too?
One, two, three, and already on it.
Okay.
I, finish, yeah, and then through that, would there ever be a process to? Put these together, like, from the town's point of view, like, or would we keep it as multiple separate lots, like? Or we ever just say, like, it's all one lot, it's all one owner, it's all, it's gonna be landlocked, there's gonna be no access, like?
Then Danny has to push through the province, so he would have to, okay, or for the owner, you can't validate individuals, they're landlocked, they're all be landlocked.
I would wait through that when I bought my lot.
That's all.
Counselor in the mic?
Okay, so that pie-shaped one.
Yep.
There's occupancy on that?
Yes.
So from the tip of that pie shape to the end. Of where you want to sell that unopened road allowance. These allow, or that person is allowed to have half of that road all the way down. Till it hits Madawan Street.
No.
Well, I, that's the part that, uh, Mayor Bilaje asks, and that's the part that I will get clarification on, because there is no. Technically worthy of running neighbor, because that's the road, that's Madawan Street.
Yes, I understand.
Right, so, so.
And if he's not in that road allowance, I don't know, you should have to write for 50%.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll get clarification on that little piece of land that is, uh, right at the end of that, at that pie shape there. Which both of you are flagging that same issue.
And my other concern is James Street. At the, when you get to the end of James Street, Louis goes all the way down to the riverside, Turkets Park, right?
James does.
James does, you're talking about James across Louis going to.
Going, going to the creek.
Yeah.
Right, isn't that was a property, private property that they were at for sale before?
No, that's just, that's, that's just the road allowance that's unopened right from James Street.
Number 300.
That's just an unopened road allowance.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
And council's already agreed to sell that.
Is that considered floodlit?
Uh, there is along, along, uh, the, uh, Boom Creek there, and that's, if they wanted to do something with that, then they have to go through. Uh, building and all.
Conservation and.
Conservation.
I looked at buying that property years ago and I I'm quite familiar.
Now we're going to Rankin. Isn't that, uh?
My taxi or?
Well, you got First Street. That comes down to it, is, okay, so you have a. You can't mention no names, so.
It's actually, First Street is actually a little further away, it's actually, that actual part there is Second Street.
It's Second Street?
Right.
Okay, so isn't that the one that we just not long ago, uh, sold it, somebody took a?
Yeah, so the, the current owner, current neighbor.
Yes.
Already have half that road allowance.
Okay.
And now they wanna acquire the other, and they own on both sides, so now they.
This is the, okay, I got you, that's the end of, the end of the Rankin, that goes down there, okay, I got you.
And they, they, we've all, council already sold them the one half of the road, now they wanna get the other half of the road.
Got, nobody interested in it.
Well, they own on both sides, so.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah, it's all a good bit.
Yeah, I know what it is.
That one's a no-brainer almost.
Okay, but I thought that Peter Street was landlocked, for sure, because I remember the people living along there.
It is landlocked because, uh, uh, a piece of property was sold, uh, some years back. From, uh, the end of that white section of the, uh, when it's colored, that's sold right to Park Street, so, so it is.
All right, so, this is a crazy stupid question, just for my information, 299 and 301, that's the ones you're talking about? The one that's colored in with no number?
Yes.
299 and 301, so 299.
So did they each buy their half or?
No, that, that property there at the end of Peter Street is also owned by a partner of the people that own. Oh, that that property there at the end of Peter Street is also owned by a partner of the people that own all the properties.
Ah, so they've got something in mind for future development.
Yeah.
Oh, which is good.
Pretty cool.
Yeah, at least if something happened, that'd be great.
Oh, yeah, so we just need to get a fair valuation on that piece of land. And for us, that's uh not. There can never be a road there because you sold you sold the the piece at the end of Park Street, so that can never be a road. They might as well, we might as well get some money out of that.
All right, I'd go with you.
That's regarding.
I'll move it.
You'll move it?
I gotta. I'm getting tired of holding my hand now.
I didn't see you.
That's what, did you want there? Did you want a sling?
Well, I just, I I'm alone. Like, I'm trying to figure out this James Street, this. I mean. I I go down there all the time. To to take to to bring my dog down there and he runs around and and I have a cup, a cup of tea and watch him. Anyway. That, I thought that was the end of Louis Street. Because you go down Louis and then you turn on the James. And Louis continues.
Louis goes straight through.
Yeah.
You follow the park fence, that's that's Louis.
Yeah.
Well, that's all we're talking about. If you're coming up Madawan or James. In the curve, well, go straight instead of taking the curve. That's James Street.
Where the.
That's what we're talking about.
It goes to the creek.
It's in between.
Bush there.
Well, the only thing is, is down here is the fence for uh.
Here.
Hey.
Break through there, that goes down the water.
Just let your dog go a little longer and it finds that street.
Well, that, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, and that one, so we sold that little piece of property there. Where where the where the um. Uh the rest, the station is the.
Little station.
Little station.
Exactly.
So that's the road. Oh, okay, James goes straight to you. Okay.
Okay.
Now, you're not gonna take my little park every day.
There's no sure.
Down there, I don't know if you're.
But it's a flood plain.
Yeah. We should make it into a little park.
Any other questions or comment? No, so I need a seconder.
Yep. I'm sure.
So. Is that?
So who's like councillor Gardner? Seconded by councillor Bigelow. Need resolve that council of the town of Manowar receives report number twenty five dash sixty five R titled. Closure and sale of unopened road allowances. And further that, council approves the closure of sale of the Peter Street unopened road allowance. And further that, council directs the C E O treasurer to notify the abutting neighbor. To determine their interest in their fifty percent of the allowance and to obtain a property evaluation to determining. Determine the selling price. And further that, a public meeting be held on November ten, twenty twenty five. During a regular meeting of council to advise the public of the three road closures identified in this report. And solicit any comments from the public. And further that, council directs the C E O treasurer. To complete the sale of the three identified properties in accordance with the municipal policies and procedures by law. And have the road allowances closed if no unresolved issues from the public meeting. Final chance for a question and comment. Councillor Devine?
When you, when we sell this or you sell this or whoever sell this, and not quiet. Is there an evaluation that we're basing ourselves on, but it's worth?
Yeah, so we we will be hired a firm to do uh evaluation of the property.
Okay.
And then we uh give a copy of that to uh the purchaser. And they say this is the value, that's what our policy says, and they have, they have to agree to it, and they have to give us a deposit right there then. At ten percent of the valuation, and then we proceed to finalizing.
Okay, my last question. Whichever property that we're selling, the three out of the three of them, you only get. One side that's willing to buy. What happens to the remaining? Other side or that other person will have an opportunity at a lower rate to purchase everything?
So when there's a, there's a request to buy the road allowance?
Yes.
We uh so they we first would offer on their their fifty percent?
Yes.
And we go to the other side and says, are you interested in buying your fifty percent? And if they decline?
Yes.
Then the purchaser can buy the whole thing.
Okay, but but at the going rate?
At the value, the price of the.
That you're okay. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Any any other questions? Okay, ready for a vote?
Yeah.
Report it please. Okay, we're done. We we went through it.
Councillor Devine?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Bigelow?
Yes.
Councillor Rob?
Yes.
Councillor Keever?
Yes.
And Mayor Belaji?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. And ten point five, which is our final one, it's uh prepared by the CEO Fredr. Title four fifty one visit lift station, report number twenty five dash sixty six R. Paul?
Thank you. Uh it's hard to believe that it's almost a couple of months ago I was here. And provided a report on the situation where there are pumps at our lift station. And I indeed gave the ones that Manowar failed and council approved to get uh a new pump for it. And I also advised you that the one at uh four fifty one visit failed. And that's a key one, that's eighty eight horsepower pump, it's a big pump with a big price. And uh she took it out and sent it away to see if they could get a rebuild. And while that was going on. Uh because we can't see without a pump, we put in a spare, if you like, this, a rental pump. That's been costing us eighty eight hundred dollars a month uh since uh that's been installed. That's a big pump, big ticket price. So now we received the call to fix it. So I shared that with you, it's a hundred and thirty seven thousand three hundred and seventy five dollars. And uh. Doesn't really make any sense to you that. The reason for that is they have to rebuild it scratch as a therapy. You pump because you can't get parts. And even even when they uh opened up the pump to look what it what's in it. Even though we've had it, you know, in place and working for thirty four years, parts in there that have date stamp. Uh that that ages into forty seven years ago, so they're obsolete, you can't get them. Uh so we have to figure out something else. Uh so working with Aqua, Aqua, they've uh drawn out and had new pumps sourced. That that new pump was a sixty horse, not an eighty eight horsepower, because. They've been told that the eighty eight horsepower is oversized, it doesn't need to be that big, and that this new one. Has the all important impeller, which, you know, breaks up.
Yeah.
Uh you know, the 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 material and the waste that goes through it, and so the sixty eight, the sixty horsepower pump was dropped. And it has a value of ninety nine thousand. Eight hundred and ninety dollars. Now, interestingly enough, as just, you know, Goodwill Jeffers. The sellers I know said that if we buy a pump from them, and they're a very reputable uh supplier. And the ones who we've been renting from, and we're talking four months with the rental there, because it's, we rented it for two months. And if we order it tomorrow, be two months before we can get it here, so that's four months, that's thirty five thousand dollars for the rent. Central, which uh Zion is willing to waive if we order the pump, so you'll have to pay the thirty five thousand. And so with that, I didn't even bother to calling other people to say, what's the price on a pump? Because if we don't go with Zion, then we're gonna have to pay that thirty five thousand. Rental, that makes no sense. And so the fact is uh the net cost that they're pulling, and by the way, I should. Give a little plug to Aqua here, because uh we sent them copies of our hydro bill, and they worked with uh. Uh basically Hydro One, I S O is the, he's the distributing part of I O, of Hydro One. And so we'll qualify for an eight thousand dollar rebate, because we're putting in, you know, sort of energy efficient pump at four fifty one visit. So our net cost will be ninety one thousand eight hundred and eighty seven.
For a brand new pump.
For a brand new pump, uh if we get thirty four years out of debt, that'd be somebody else's worry, I would say, and uh.
I won't be here.
Yeah, and by two months from now, so even though it'll be, if we order it tomorrow and it comes in before the end of the year. It'll likely be an expense in the current year, but from a cash flow perspective. Will we be paying it next year in January, which will be a cash flow of twenty twenty six, which is all important. And therefore, my my recommendation to you is that the council uh. Receives and accepts this report and that the council further, the council approves purchase of the sixty horsepower pump. Uh four fifty one visit at at an install cost, and that is at ninety one thousand is cost install everything again. At ninety one thousand two hundred and fifty seven.
Questions for Paul, uh councillor Rock?
Good idea, but are we um? Are we not bound by our own purchasing policy to go and source other? Pumps?
Uh so because it's under a hundred thousand, so we're not we're not committed to have to go to tender.
Okay.
And and so uh we can sole source or single source, if it's appropriate to do so. And we'll document in the file why we're doing it, because the purpose of going to three quotes, say, is that you want to make sure you have the best price.
Yeah.
And here uh if we don't go to the single source. Then we're paying thirty five thousand dollar premium because we have to be there rental, so we done it, folks. Well, the purpose of the three quotes is to make sure you get the best price. Here, we have a a special arrangement, as well, they'll say, we'll waive that, so so we are getting this one. So so, yeah.
I think uh my question was answered, but. Do, can we afford the pump? I'm asking myself that question, and then something happens that I ask another question, can we afford not to? And I'm saying, we can, we can't afford not to. And I think this is about the best deal that we could get. I'm sure you've sourced it and Aqua's has helped out, so. I I I'm okay with it.
Yeah, and just to add to that, councillor, so none doubt, so if we don't replace it, then we're gonna. You know, it's either, can you, can you say can you afford not to? Can we afford to uh not have the pump running and just? You know, until we decide to buy it once, pump rocks to, or just not, no, we're not gonna do that. And uh uh eight thousand eight hundred a month over twelve months, that's a hundred thousand a year. So one year, we're gonna pay the cost of the pump and have to rent forever. So might as well just buy the bullet by the hundred grand and we'll have it for, oh, maybe thirty four years again, so, yeah.
Okay, gardener?
Yeah, just that's, that was kind of the number that I was gonna come up with. It's a hundred and five thousand six hundred dollars to rent it for a year, so you're paying it. Off within uh usage of a year. Um I get that pumps have changed a lot over forty seven years. Um it sounds like this was probably a used pump that was put in thirty four years ago, if the parts are already um older when it was installed. Um it. I just want to be sure that it's, we're not hindering ourselves later on. We're trying to do something in a certain part of town. We're trying to develop that area. There's gonna be sewage that has to go somewhere. It's gonna end up likely. Coming down and ending up at a lift station, and I'm assuming that.
Absolutely.
I don't understand that.
Hundred percent.
But I don't wanna be back here in, not, maybe not us, but in fifteen years saying, hey, we got a. Pump that we need double the size of now because we've increased the capacity that's going into it. So I would just want to make sure that we're covered for future growth, at least to some extent. Um but like I said, I I understand that pumps are a lot more capable uh these days than they were forty seven years ago, so that might be the reason why. We're able to go down, but.
And to that point, I mean, I I have to take the word of the our consultants, which are the specialists in these matters, and they. Uh assure me that that is the right fitted pump for what that's lift station can receive, so uh so since. It was, the pump that was there was, maybe it was a good deal thirty four years ago, but way too big for what it is.
Well, it sounds like it was sitting on the shelf for thirteen years before it was installed, so it wasn't a deal.
Exactly.
It was a great deal, yeah.
So I I can go a step further and and answer that question, because I, first thing came to my mind, who who decided that? Eighty horsepower is too big, sixty power is sixty horsepower is the size. And you're saying, well, we're gonna be adding, but you're only gonna be filling the lift station. To the amount it's filling today, no matter, you'll just be emptying it more often. Okay, so the pump will always be okay, because your your lift station's not getting any bigger. You're at, you follow what I'm saying? Well, once you fill it up with sewage, you know, that pump kicks in, empties it. Okay, fills again, empties. That's how that works.
What if the inflow is faster than what the pump can keep pumping it down? No?
No, you can't see that.
Okay, that that's my answer. You're you're, you know more than I.
Yeah, so.
To that point, just to say it in a different way is. I could tell you right now, I might empty it three times a day or three times a week, and the more volume, maybe it's four times a day.
Okay.
And five times a week.
Exactly.
Like that, but not, you're right, that that's a given volume to the.
But what what we have to remember is that the sewage. The 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 whole sewage system in Manowar was designed for thirty five hundred population. We have to remember that. We're using maybe two thirds of its capacity. Yeah, your turn. Well, and that's, and that's uh councillor Gardner, I have another question.
The evaluation of that pumping station that you need to motor for. Is it, is it uh covers a big area of the town? Or is it just for this site?
The whole town.
The whole town?
Yeah.
So I mean, the expansion that we're gonna hopefully do on top of Dorian. Then it's gonna come through here also?
Yeah, everything goes to the lagoon.
All right.
And so everything to the lagoon, and this all goes through four fifty one visit lift station.
Wow, this is the very, the very.
Sure, and I'd like to make the move that we go ahead.
Director?
Yeah, yeah, so I just want to make another point here that doesn't get lost in the conversation. The pump is a flight pump, which manufactured in Sweden and sold by Xylem. The only place you can buy it. You can't find from anybody else, brand new. They're the authorized reseller. They're they're the manufacturer, they're everything. Flight pumps come from Xylem. We have flight, if we change the the pipe, the pump from a flight pump, another manufacturer. We have to retool the whole inside of the uh lift station, which would be way above what we have available.
We have to replace the seat, everything.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And the and the design of it changes, right?
So the parts for that pump, if something goes wrong, is available.
It's from Sweden.
Yeah.
There's we, the whole, the whole, all of our pumps are from Sweden, from manufacturers.
All right. Good enough for me. Any other questions?
That's how we, we go ahead with this, pretty obvious.
Just in case you didn't see your own go up the.
No.
I don't move bird, councillor Gardner, I need a second bird. Well, thank you.
Yes, as the previous.
I don't remember, but sure.
Where's your glasses?
So moved by councillor Gardner, seconded by councillor Devine. Need resolve that council of the town of Manowar receives report number twenty five dash sixty six R. Title four fifty one visit lift station. And further that, council approves the purchase of the sixty horsepower pump. For the four fifty one visit lift station at an installed cost of ninety one thousand eight hundred and eighty seven dollars. Plus applicable tax. Or important, recorded vote requested by councillor Devine. And then here's your final chance for.
Your ball?
Question or comments? None? None?
No.
None? None? You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, yeah. I'm good now. Yes, record both by councillor Devine.
Councillor Devine?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Keever?
Yes.
Councillor Bigelow?
Yes.
Councillor Rob?
Yes.
And Mayor Belaji?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously.
You. There are no bylaws this evening, uh old business, uh. Quick update on the renaming of Erdman Street request for Chick Webster?
The signs were approved by the family order uh and ready, so we're just, okay.
Nice.
Then uh, yeah. Minor minor change, just so everyone knows, I could show you the photo, but um. The sign is a little bit darker blue than the rest of our signs. You won't notice unless you put them side by side. Ranger's blue. Um.
Just gonna say.
The hockey sticks are red, Rangers red. And the lettering on the sign, Rangers right, so so it 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 is a little bit different, but that's the kind of goes with the purpose of. Designing a street and and it it's something families have.
Well, good. Are you sure the sticks are not Canadian colored?
Uh, no, not that.
Counselor Teber? I just wondered, would you let us know when that's gonna happen so that we can.
Oh, yes, for sure.
Any other uh anyone? No? Okay, twelve point two uh signage policy, nothing yet. Uh twelve point three phenomenon correspondence, consultation, natural gas expansion in Ontario, Paul?
Yeah, I was half uh. I've having received uh requests to uh attend uh or make delegation requests that I roll up. I was um this this hydro, for example, they offer an opportunity to to have a delegation. And I thought, well, I will ask for a delegation at Enbridge as for the gas purposes and. Bring this into the discussion, but I've since found out that uh. Enbridge don't offer delegations at Roma and will not, so so I will then go back to this file and and come back.
Weird, eh, with the total advertising that they pour in there?
Yeah.
That they know the.
You know, delegation.
Okay, uh. Twelve point four, National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. It just keeps coming back, okay? And municipality of Madowa one request for shared fire service. Twelve point five.
Uh, oh, Counselor Gardner is insisting.
Yeah, I had asked for that to come back. Um. There was a lot of conversation at the last meeting, um open with some of the public. Um and a lot of conversation at this table. Um I was pretty ready to make a motion that um. We reply in the same fashion that they replied to our request. Um, my feeling now, um after kind of. Calming down and and thinking about it is um. I I'm still not really interested in it, um but possibly interested in the conversation around all shared services. Between Madowa and Madowa um. And maybe that's put off until those conversations or as part of those conversations. Um because there's a couple of shared services and and that conversation needs to be had with all um or maybe municipalities, but because they're asking for it. Kind of gives us the excuse to get to it, um but that would be what I would prefer to see. I would like us to to somehow strike up. On a group or committee or something like that to look at all shared services between the two municipalities. If they're not interested in amalgamation, then. I think that it is only fair that we look at all of our shared services and make sure that. We're both getting a fair end of this deal um and what we offer each other.
Counselor Levite?
I agree, and uh. I'd like to be part of that committee. I have thirty one years' experience in the fire department. I've been out there, look at the place. And the area, and I like to put my five cents in there and see what kind of uh. Progress we can do with the township and put a plan together and a plan has to be put together so we can. Uh introduce it to them to see if they're satisfied or not on the town's. Uh perspective, because we are not going to put money out and not get anything in return. So I'd like to be on that committee and that she and I think the fire chief should be on it also.
Any other comments? Um I I know the next item is Madowa Voyager Days, and we had said. That we either call a special meeting and just do that purposely. I have said with the CEO to discuss this, and I think. If we could grab maybe an example, our next committee, the whole meeting.
Mm hmm.
And.
Put it on there.
But that and Voyager Days on on and that's all. You know, and and let's get to the bottom of what we want to do.
Okay.
And let's come up with with something. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, seventeen?
Yeah.
Good, let me back in.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds nice, sure.
Then then that would come off the the old business, because we'll take care of it in one meeting.
Good.
Uh something you wanted to add, Paul?
Oh, sorry.
All right, so we're good to go. We can skip uh twelve point six, where your days?
Yep.
You don't live for sure there. Well, I'm I'm still thinking about Counselor Gardner, said I'm still absorbing. Because I was of the same opinion as you were at the last meeting and so I'm trying to figure out why. Why your your change of attitude? And I guess I'll find out at the next meeting.
I can kind of rebuttal to that. I I'm still of the mindset that I don't want to do it. But if they say, well, we're willing to pay this and it's, you know, a big moneymaker for us, well, then. It'd be stupid not to, um but if they come with the same terms that they wanted before, then I'm not interested, absolutely not. That's my preference. Um but if they come and they say, hey, we want to give you this, this and this for all your shared services.
And we'll buy a truck ourselves.
Then then fantastic, then let's have the conversation, but I think that. There needs to be more conversation than what was had, because I wasn't happy with what was that.
Yeah. Okay, good. I feel better. So number thirteen, uh new business, I think we should change the the name of that and call it the Counselor Gardner.
Counselor Gardner.
Anyway, so you want to enter all introduces one or you want to go through the whole thing? So one, two, three, four of them.
To be completely honest with you, I have a prior commitment and I gotta leave here in about fifteen minutes, and I don't know if we're gonna get through all four.
Okay, so first one, Conservation Authority.
Uh so Conservation Authority, I just have this on here because uh it's unfortunate the counselor Mick's not here tonight. I'm sure everybody reads the news. It has been a absolute gong show at Conservation Authority um for the better part of our term. Um and I feel very left in the dark. Um when it comes to it, what I know as a council member for the town of Madowa. Um is that of what is in the newspaper and on day to day. Um I haven't heard much about what's going on there. I know that there's some in camera stuff, and that's probably why. Um but I don't know if there's ways that we can go into camera to find out what's going on, um but something needs to happen. Um. It it's a gong show. It's a nightmare from what I'm reading and what I'm hearing and and stuff like. I don't understand. We're giving money and we're not getting any information back. Um. I I I really struggle to understand. What benefit we're getting right now from the Conservation Authority. I'm not saying that in general, there's no need for it. I'm saying right now, it doesn't sound like it's operating. Like a fine, like a like an efficient machine, um so I don't know if we're getting. Our money's worth out of it right now with the way that it's operating. It's very, it's a very big mess, and I'd like to know more information on that. Um a- and then we can kind of decide if we keep. Keep doing this, like it it doesn't make sense to me right now with the way things are running. Um I've looked down east of us and there's municipalities that are right on the waterway and they don't have conservation authorities. Um so like, to be honest, I've never even been presented from anything from the Conservation Authority to tell me this, this and this is what they do. I have a general understanding, like most people do of what they do, but I've never actually been given like a presentation or anything like that that I can recall. That says this is everything that we do for the town of Madowa, and this is where your money goes to. So that was kind of my hope. Um with Counselor Mick, so maybe I'll reach out to him between now and next meeting and and uh. And and just try to find out, yeah, some more information for the rest of the table.
Any questions for Counselor Gardner?
I agree.
Counselor Teber? Well, just a comment. We have a right to know because we are making payment to this this authority. And we do have a right to know what the hell's going on, so I agree. Counselor Levite?
The thing is, is that if we're going to go into a camera session on this, maybe we should invite the the new chair that. Been temporarily appointed to ask questions. And get a general feeling, because it'd be coming from the horse's mouth instead of speculating. And maybe it would be a good idea. I don't know if Counselor Gardner would be in favor of that or not, but. There is an opportunity there.
But shouldn't we pass it through our route first?
But like.
Yeah, well, you'll get the information.
That's what I mean. See, I think that's what the Counselor Gardner said. He's gonna get in touch with them and that.
Yeah.
Personally, I don't think this has to go in camera. I think that should be a public uh.
Public knowledge?
Public knowledge. The gong show is public.
Yes.
And I I don't know why we'd have to go behind closed doors to discuss it, and if I'm wrong, I'm sure staff will advise me on it.
Yeah, the only thing that I didn't see is that.
Keep the name top.
Yes, yes. For whatever reason, our position was around discussion that was in camera at the Conservation Authority. And for my hope of my group that we were made aware of that information, it should not be in the public. Because it's already.
Well, my my rebuttal to that, Paul.
No.
My rebuttal to that is if they've heard it in camera, they have no business repeating that.
That's I know.
That's on them, so we we shouldn't have to put up guards for them to slip up, like I'm against you on that one.
And it wasn't bait today, besides that, all the information.
Yeah, but that could be your say too. Any other comments or?
Yeah.
But I'm I'm looking forward to get some innovation to this.
That would be good.
Even on?
Yeah.
It's back with your second one, thirteen point two, twenty twenty six tax rate vacant lots.
Yeah, this one isn't anything outrageous. I think I've been voicing this concern for a while. Um and every time that I I do, um it's kind of too little, too late, so to speak, in the sense that we're we're. Passing a motion to approve an increase or or the the uh. Uh sort of looking for like the temporary rate that we set, which is fifty percent of last year's rate, like. So I kind of wanted to get ahead of this a little bit for this year, and we have very few of them. In our in our community, we have very few vacant lots, um but the ones that we have. Um some of them are getting discounted rates for being vacant lots, and I don't think that we should be. Rewarding people for not doing anything with their lots. I think that we should be charging them at fair market. Tax rates so that they do something with the property or they. Sell it to somebody else who wants to do something with the property. We're begging for people to build here and to 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 move to our community. And we're kind of letting people sit on lots and do nothing with them. They just they have grass grown. And trees on them and whatever, and it just sits there and does nothing, so it doesn't serve the community any purpose by doing that, so I'd like to see us. Get rid of that um in the uh in the tax rates um. Categories, I guess it is.
Before we strike.
The interim rate.
The interim.
Exactly, the interim rate, that's what I was looking for. So nothing really to do tonight. I just wanted to bring up the conversation so that it's on everybody's radar.
So so you're just suggesting that. There's no, there's no special rate for a an empty lot.
Right, now we have like a vacancy discount, right? There's a smaller rate for them.
Yeah.
I want to get rid of that.
But what do you replace it with?
The regular rate and you pay based on the impact evaluation of your vacant lot.
Okay. Okay. Question uh. From a staff uh point of view, what 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 has to be done? What? How 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 should we move forward?
First of all, we will engage to find out what we can and cannot do with the municipal act. First of all. And whatever we can do, then we'll come back. And understand that the interim rate does not set a rate.
No.
No rate set.
Forget that.
That's just fifty percent of last year. You set the rate, the council sets the rate, and then you adjust. Correctly, so we have a good time, but I think right now, and we'll do the research, we'll find out what we can do, and we'll come back.
That's good, thank you. Counselor Levite?
In other municipalities and townships. If anybody buys a piece of property, say you own a property and you sold it to somebody. Well, that person and they have a bylaw policy where you have got up to three years to build your home. Clear your property first, start your foundation in your second year and have completion in your third year of your home. And that's in Bonfield, they have that in Cowling, so. I don't know if we have a policy of that nature here. We don't, so maybe we should be looking at something like this. That way, when you have a piece of property, you've got up to three years to get a something on it, at least, and bring the value up.
What if someone buys a property just to have a property? You know, they they no no intent has to build, then there should be a higher rate if it remains. Should be taxed on the rate that it's worth. And I I can agree.
Yeah, yeah, if it were fifty thousand.
Okay. We'll we'll look forward to you, and yes, let's keep it going on a little busily. Um thirteen point three, Counselor Gardner, we talked about a little bit earlier, commercial recycling, commercial tax rate adjustment.
And just for the sake of my timing and would the uh tape be okay with bringing that back as old business discussed at the next meeting?
I'm good.
Okay. Or sorry, you can clarify now?
No, so um with our new rules and procedures for thirteen point three and thirteen point four, if you. If you do not establish them tonight because you have already accepted the agenda as it is, then you have to do a motion. To defer those two new businesses to the next regular meeting and they'll both come back as new business on that.
Or do you want to just one?
I just wanted to do thirteen point three. I wanted to talk about thirteen four.
Okay.
You have to.
Yeah.
You have to defer that one.
So that's, so can I make that motion or just the other people have to make?
You can make the motion.
So can I make the motion to defer thirteen point three until the next council meeting?
You need a written motion, yeah, there's someone willing to second this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, will second it?
I will.
Yeah.
So moved by Counselor Gardner, seconded by Counselor Ross, we reveal that council can refer new business item thirteen point three to the next regular meeting of council. Questions, comments?
Questions, comments? None? All in favor? Carry.
Appreciate that, thank you. Um. At the time, I didn't realize that I wasn't gonna be able to make it when I asked for these to be on there. Uh thirteen four, Remembrance Day, so this comes uh with the other topic in old business, uh Truth and Reconciliation Day. I wanted to know if anybody put any thought um into this. We said that we would discuss it later. And now is later, and our next meeting is November tenth, so doesn't give much time. Um so I was curious as to what the rest of the table wants to do. We gave uh the federal holiday of. Truth and Reconciliation Day we gave off. Remembrance Day is also a federal holiday, not a provincial holiday, same as Truth and Reconciliation Day. Just curious as to the table's feelings on what we want to do with staff that day.
Counselor Ross?
I think Remembrance Day is equally important, and I would definitely be in favor. Of doing the same thing for staff as we did on Truth and Reconciliation.
Counselor Teber? I, as uh my dad was a veteran, I kind of agree with that, but I disagree with just giving it. I think. We have to use it as a bargaining tool at negotiations time. And if we just nearly really give it, they're gonna say, well, we'll get it again next year because that's many fail. Uh it's same like reconciliation. We've given it two years now in a row. They're they're not gonna take it seriously if we use it as a negotiation tactic, so um. I I think that that we, if we do give it this year, it has to be known as just for this year and that. It will be brought up at negotiation time. I I have a problem with that. Both of them actually, tell you the truth. That's why I voted against it last time for the reconciliation. I I totally agree with your cancer to bear. We're we're shooting ourselves in the foot. I I think uh. I take Remembrance Day very seriously. It's a day for reflection. And I think given a day off to. Go do whatever you want is not what we should do. I totally agree that we let our staff attend the celebration at eleven o'clock. You know, I have no issues there, and if you want my honest opinion on the uh uh. Truth and reconciliation, we should be doing something towards it, not just giving a day off.
Yeah.
You know, and I I think it would be, it's uh, you know, let's get together as as a unit, and by unit, I mean council. Municipal staff or or unionized staff, you know, let's do something to uh.
Celebrate.
To 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 celebrate it or to honor it. That's the way I feel, and yes, you're right. It's become already a joke at the negotiations, because, no, no, we don't want it. You know, we we say we'll give it to you, but you know, there there has to be an exchange. And no, no, they still give it to us anyways, and that's what's been happening. And no, they don't give it to us anyways, and that's what's been happening. And uh. I I I'm a strong believer, and I know I'm repeating myself, to do something about it, to do something about truth and reconciliation. And to do something about honoring, you know, our our present and past soldiers. That's uh what I believe in.
I agree.
Counselor Levite?
Oh, I agree on on those concept, but. Indigenous people have the right to be there, have the right to celebrate. Their culture has the right to bring forward the the past where they can pray, they can offer their tobacco. And. Yeah, you can do that probably at work here, go outside, spend a half an hour out there, but you're not with the rest of the community. You've. You're our stalker at your office doing your daily work. And for them for them to be recognized and and appreciate their culture, they should have that chance.
So then negotiate a fair deal with the town.
Point of order?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. At the last meeting. Well, or not last meeting, but the meeting that we discussed National Truth and Reconciliation Day, I brought up Remembrance Day, and I was told quite clearly that it was not. Part of the conversation that we were talking about Truth and Reconciliation Day, now I am talking about Remembrance Day.
You you brought the the matter.
I brought it up, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have brought.
So that's why I think.
I brought it up also, uh. That I want to treat both the same way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're you're right. So what with uh. Counselor Bigelow, did you have anything to?
I I actually agree with everything that Bassel said, I think maybe this year I'd like to give it off as a holiday, to show that we are taking it very seriously, and I would. Agree with that Counselor Teber as well, and that's embarrassing. That we need to actually start doing something about it to actually show. Uh exactly how serious the like that that we actually do take it.
Participate.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Don't fur.
Well, okay, Paul.
If I may, just to uh help you inform on the new decision. And I. I say this with the my treasurer, treasurer has common common thinking. And uh. Where I will come on that, and I want to start by saying that. And it's not just those special days, there are. Different people, there are different days throughout the year that have a lot of me. We just identified two that are. A little big time meetings, so a lot of people and this, so um. With my treasurer, I say, as I shared with you in my last report, I said over eight thousand dollar. Impact to say we'll give you a day off and not adding, but just to say you have a day off, and so the cost of the town is eight thousand dollars for every day. Paying the workforce. The town already gives two float days to use that somebody's lead, you don't push and ask, if you're really strong about. Remembrance Day, well. Tell your supervisor, you want to take that day off and use your floating. And those float days have been around. Town of Madawan, collective agreement for as long as the collective agreement has been here already. And so if you're gonna grant another day, then you're really giving three float days, so that's really what you're saying, you want to give three float days, four float days, six float days. Understand that every one of those days is an eight thousand dollar price tag. Or say, no, you want to take, you want to take Remembrance Day, well then, uh use your floating. That's something we should propose.
We will bring it back on on business?
The decision's gonna be too late to make at the next meeting. I was just kind of hoping that we can give staff guidance. And and maybe if we need a formal decision made at the next meeting. But I was hoping that we can give them guidance.
Well, then we need a resolution, we need a motion.
I would make a motion that we allow staff to to uh. To take time off for the celebrations that are happening here at our Senate town for this year. And give them two hours, you know, just a half an hour to get ready before they go over there at eleven. And then half an hour to come back, so if they, if you give them a couple hours off, just to attend that ceremony for this year.
Just a question to staff could. And forgive me, it's been a while since I've participated in the march over, are they still doing the march from?
Yes, ten thirty from the.
Would our, would our staff? Would it make sense for our staff to participate in that to to? Make the hike down here with the the kids and the soldiers and stuff like that, and then let them attend the.
The kids don't walk, I don't think.
Directly here.
Yeah.
But it's it's two hours, but allow them to do that.
Yeah.
Recognition about uh Mayor Belonche said earlier, saying, you know, why don't we do something about it? So Council Gardener says, well, you know, participating in the walk, that's part of doing something about it, and then finishing at the at the epitaph and taking part in the ceremony. And whether that's two hours, three hours, whatever. It's it's very symbolic, at the same time, it's not giving the whole day off, but it's recognizing that this is important to all, and I think that's a win-win.
I agree.
I would second his motion.
Maybe one thing two hours. No, participate.
Yes, I was just gonna say like um. Remember last year. And uh was was my first year. And we made sure that uh. Our staff play a key role, remember this thing.
Okay.
They set it up. And tear it down. Um we provide some tables and chairs. And then uh. And then we allow them to attend, we don't look at the clock and say, okay, they were there for an hour or two.
Yeah.
We say they set it up, they headed, they tore it down, and they come and go as they please for that period of time. We're not saying they're looking at the clock. I know you're gonna say two hours.
I I wouldn't put two hours either.
I'll put a time to it.
I think we're doing it right now, we're serving, recognizing it, but.
I totally agree with you, Dex, and maybe the more should just say that we uh.
You participate.
That uh we allow. We will allow the time for staff to participate in.